Of the February 1st, 2016 Village Board. There is a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We can all rise for the Plenage of Agents.
Plenage of Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, he's backwards. He's backwards. At this time I'll take nominations for Chairman Pro Temp for the February 1st, 2016 Village Board meeting. I nominate Jack.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate Jack. Who accepts? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Take it away, Jack.
Item five is public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that is not a specific agenda item we have here.
Nope.
Okay. Item six, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular Village Board meeting of January 18th, 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, then, a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
He's not here to vote, that's his problem.
Unfinished business, discuss and consider potential citizen appointments to openings on various Village committees and commissions.
I did not get any from anybody.
So we're still lacking of you?
I'm working on.
Okay.
Chairman Pro Temp? Can we juggle the agenda just a little bit because we do have our EMS group here. We'll also have to be on duty and be at the Town Board meeting as well.
Oh, only gotta be two places at once.
Yes.
Got a Skype. All right.
Moving down to...
We can jump down to 10A then.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Deer Grove Emergency Management Commission, is that supposed to be Deer Grove?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine, I just didn't know we changed our name. Item I, discuss and consider approval of ordering one or two ambulance chassis and I'll let you guys tell us what you've got.
Okay, so this is part of the discussion on the January 21st meeting of the Deer Grove Commission. And there was a group of, from the EMS district that got together to discuss initially which type of ambulance to select for the upcoming year because it is a budgeted item for the district for at least one ambulance for 2017. In order to make that happen, the district has to order these, first the ambulance chassis and then the truck and the chassis takes six or eight months to do. So they wanted to get, the commission wanted to get this in front of the various boards as soon as it could. Subsequent to that discussion also was the potential that the committee threw out that there might be means to actually get two ambulances versus one because of the finances, not only of the district being much more positive last year. That's a good thing and a bad thing because obviously the services were needed. So unfortunately, there's folks that needed EMS services more than was expected. So there's some plus side there. There's also the existing newer ambulance that could be traded in, so, as well as discounts associated with ordering two versus one. So that's kind of a quick overview of that. Ask Jerry to come in and come before the board to address any questions. I'm not sure that we'll necessarily decide tonight, but at least we're getting in front of the board to actually have the discussion and then see where that goes.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be necessarily voted on tonight, but we need the discussion.
Yeah, particularly because we need to order the chassis or chassis fairly soon.
What is the deadline for the chassis?
By March.
By March.
It's a four to five month beat time for the chassis to be built.
Okay.
It's a divisional anywhere from four to four and a half months for the actual ambulance to be built on top of it. The chassis that are required now aren't kept in stock, so they're all built as needed, which is why it's such a big challenge.
Jerry, can you come to the table, the mic? The other push for the newer ambulances is primarily safety for the occupants. The design of the chassis now are such that the paramedics can then turn their seats forward so they're not facing sideways, you know, in the unfortunate situation that the ambulance does get hit. The occupants are much more, much in a safer position in that fashion. So that was the other huge factor for the subcommittee in proposing, you know, looking at two rather than one.
The seats you're talking about are the paramedic seats, not the airway seat, like?
All three of the seats in this new ambulance design will face forward, all of them.
Okay. Because like the airway seat, I think already does...
The airway seat does rotate on its own. The curb side one is actually on a six foot track. So you can actually rotate forward and then move back, so you can actually still have patient interaction and still face forward. And the CPR seat will actually turn and rotate forward as well. They're rotating forward and out.
Anybody else have any questions for Jerry?
Jerry, what's the all-in cost, not just chassis for total ambulance?
I'll tell you, I'm a Village Board member too, so that was my concern. For those who don't know, I think I know all of you. My name's Jerry McMullen, I'm a lieutenant with Deer Grove. Somehow I seem to always end up speaking in front of you guys. And I recognize all of you, which is both good and bad because I've been here so many times before. I just want to build on to what John said. As when we built, we put an ambulance committee together roughly five, six months ago to start looking at it because of the replacement schedule that the boards gave us for the ambulance. It's due in 2017. The oldest one we have now is the 2009 Horton, so it's going to be eight years old when it's replaced. But in looking at what we currently have and why we bought the Lifeline when we did, the Lifeline, which is the last ambulance we bought, was bought because our, the ambulance it was replacing had actually died. So we were in a position where we needed to buy what was available out there. And the Lifeline was a demo that we purchased from Jefferson. Total cost was about 228, 230, somewhere around there once it was wrapped. It was close to 240. So we've made it work. But in looking, the ambulance committee started looking at chassis and then we started looking at the new safety guidelines that are coming down the road from NFPA. There's actually, for the first time, an ambulance safety standard, which they're coming out with for the 2017 model year. And we wanted to make things as safe in the back for everybody as we could. So in looking at that, those safety features, we started looking at specific companies. Demers is the one that jumped out. A, they're very cost effective for the ambulance that you get in comparison to the Lifelines and the Broncs, which are more of a high-end manufacturer. Demers are a Canadian ambulance. But the reason they jumped out to us is, A, they make configuration specifically for safety. So they're the only ones that offer the seats that rotate forward on all three seats. And they're also the only ambulance manufacturer that crash tests their boxes. The Canadian government requires it. US government doesn't require crash testing. So, once we started narrowing down and looking at it, and I am getting to your question, man, I was trying to give you a little background. We looked at what we've done, safety-wise in the past and what we could do now. And the way that we staff our district, even four years ago when we bought the Lifeline, we still had what we considered a primary and a secondary ambulance. Right now, the way our district is staffed, we have two primary ambulances. On any given day, we're staffing right now at about the 150%, 160% level district-wide. We pay for 100, we get about 160 is what we're getting. So if we replace the Horton, which is located over in Deerfield, and we're striving to get all these safety features, well, now we're leaving the ambulance here in Cottage Grove without all these safety features and then trying to move people back and forth between the two ambulances. So once we got all that out of the way, the committee looked at, well, is it possible to do two ambulances? The total cost per ambulance, I mean, this, you're asking for an all-in price and I'm doing the best I can. I'm the head of the ambulance committee and this is my take on what we need in the back of the ambulance, based on what Demers provides and what the configuration changes may be. There is some flex to that still based on ambulance committee input, whether if we add that, then we need to take that away. So there is a little flex in the numbers yet. The cost of the ambulances that I'm looking at is $190,000 each. That's chassis and box. That's what the configuration changes that we're looking for. So two ambulances...
They've gotten cheaper since 13?
They have gotten cheaper.
Even cheaper than the demo?
Quite a bit cheaper. I'll be upfront, the base cost of the Demers ambulance with their standard configuration, which doesn't include the safety features we want, is only $142,000. So we're looking at 190. We looked at this from four standpoints. We looked at it from safety. We looked at it from a parity, so that our ambulance is actually the same as we're moving our staff from station to station, everything in the same place on both ambulances. But the two biggest things we looked at it was, and I consider them two points together, is fiscal responsibility. We're looking at it as what's sustainable for the district as opposed to what's sustainable right now. So it's 190,000 per ambulance. There's equipment that needs to be bought as well, which would be the lift system. The way that we've worked this out with the trade and with the numbers from the district is that we would pull the power cot from the Lifeline and the stair chair, so that's equipment we don't have to buy. In talking to the folks that actually deal with this kind of stuff, they said you don't need to include those as part of the trade because people don't know where they've been. They don't know how they've been maintained. We do, we have our maintenance record. So he says, "You pull those and you save quite a bit of money by not having to buy that second cot and stair chair." So, and I'm quoting from memory here, so I'm a little bit faulty sometimes. It's 190 per ambulance, the equipment cost, which is the one cot, the one stair chair, the lift systems for both, there's radios that have to be purchased, there's, we, one of the cost savings we do is we wrap our ambulances, we don't paint them. The paint job, to get a paint job like what we have on our ambulances will run you about $28,000 per ambulance. We get it wrapped and it costs us 2,500. And after four years, our wrap's still looking pretty good. So I'm pretty happy with that. It's a lot cheaper. The rough cost is 435,000, I think, is what it all came with, all the equipment, everything. It was 430. Thank you. You probably have the numbers written down, Harvey, so...
For two?
For two, with all the equipment. And what I did in there as well, again, I'm only human and I'm only one person, I built an extra 5% in there for things that I didn't think of because I said, there's a committee looking at this and not just me. Looking at what we've got for revenue this year, just in sheer revenue that was over, was roughly $100,000. And run revenue that came in that was over what we budgeted. And there's a lot of factors that play into that. Part of it was we were busier by 100 and some calls, but we also renegotiated our contract with our billing company, so we actually get to take home more of what we were paying out before. But with that, I talked with the folks at Demers. I've got a floor cost right now for the Lifeline of $85,000 as a trade. That's a solid number. I actually met with a guy just this last week in Milwaukee. We'll potentially actually get more than that. But that's the floor that he was willing to commit to, is 85,000 for the Lifeline.
For the Lifeline, it would just be 240,000.
But it also has, it's three and a half years old and has 60,000 miles on it. That's part of the issue behind this is everything depreciates unfortunately. But I think in talking to Kevin out there this last week, we'll probably get closer to 100 for it. But adding those two items together, the 100 and over fees and the 100 in, or 85 in trade, we'll also get about $10,000 off in discount for ordering two. Again, that's a rough number. It's based on the bill itself.
Wouldn't we get, being that we contribute 52 percent? Wouldn't we get 52 percent of that trade-in?
It's a 52 percent, so trade-in towards the district, not necessarily towards going back to the community.
Well, I mean, the issue is we owe four years yet on that 2013.
Okay. I'm not privy to your guys' finances. I'm giving you the numbers as I see them for what I'm laying out for the ambulances.
But we have planned for a new ambulance in 2017, but certainly not for two. And we still owe four years on the 13, so...
But let me work out the numbers for you real quick here. So the numbers work down to about 270,000 by two. Once you subtract out the discounts, the 100,000 and the trade-in on the Lifeline. We paid roughly 240 for one. And the reason I came forward with the idea for two, because Matt, in three and a half years, I'm going to come back and ask you for another quarter million dollars for another ambulance. It's every four years. If we buy two now, it gives you the eight years to figure out how to fund ambulances in the future. Because there's been a fight for years over a capital fund, over whether it gets built or, and that's outside of this discussion, but when we looked at it from a fiscal responsibility wise, if we take advantage of the year that we have this year and the ability of the value still in the Lifeline, we have the ability to push off an ambulance purchase for seven and a half years after these are built.
We have no problem funding one every four years. And that's kind of what the plan is with the eight-year replacement schedule with two ambulances, so...
Can you staff two?
We're staffing two, well, we have two stations and our staffing is split between the stations. So on any given day, yes, there's either staffing here or staffing here in the district. So we staff right now for January, we are at 152% staffing.
But two additional ones. I mean, what's the need to buy two more?
Well, the Lifeline will be gone and the Horton will be basically a backup. That's our proposal, is keeping the Horton as a backup.
And here's my other question. I've chastised you guys before. We just completed our budget cycle. Why weren't we hearing about this? That it was even in the works?
And no offense to you, Jennifer, but this actual, this item for an ambulance was discussed in front of the board at the last purchase and you were on that board. So this replacement schedule was agreed to by you guys.
It was an eight-years payment schedule and she's talking about why if you were, if the ambulance committee was organized and meeting, why wasn't that discussed during the budget when Chief Burshin came and we specifically asked, are there any big purchases in the future?
That's exactly what I mean.
But the purchase schedule was laid out for 2017 already.
We have that.
That's what I'm saying. That was already, when we went through and said that the capital purchase that we're looking at, the board was informed of the purchase in 2017. This is not to be paid for in 2016, this is a 2017 purchase. And you guys were informed of it. I'm not sure what else you'd like us to do when we don't have a capital, we don't have a capital plan set up. We're not allowed to set one up.
I think it's more the fact it's two, not one.
And if it's one, that's great. I have no problem with that. The committee looked at it from a standpoint of because of the type of year we had and what we still have, that we can get out of the Lifeline, we have the ability to buy two for a cost that's 10% more of what we paid for one.
The thing is you don't, unfortunately, because we still owe on the loan on the Lifeline. So you, you know, when you trade in your car, if you're upside down, you pay the difference. So right now, we still have the loan on the Lifeline. It is not, you don't have $85,000 worth in that vehicle. You're upside, you're probably at this point upside down on it. So you need to write that off.
And that's understandable. And the way I approach the numbers is because I say, I'm not privy to how you guys financed it. We're not privy to that. All we were privy to was you're approved to go buy an ambulance. How you guys financed that is, I'll be frank, is not my concern. How, because I can speak for the Village of Deerfield. The Village of Deerfield paid for it and it was paid for. I'd say that's, so that's all I have to go by.
Drastically different number between the two different districts, so...
The other issue that we have though is the unassigned funds. The unassigned funds, first of all, we don't know for sure what those are going to be for 2015. Secondly, traditionally, those funds have been used to offset regular budget needs of EMS so that the assessment to the villages or to the municipalities is less, as I recall. So if we go down the slope of using unassigned funds for two ambulances, then that doesn't leave as much for the municipalities to work with for other EMS budget needs.
That makes sense. Was, so was, I guess the question, was unassigned funds in the EMS budget used for the 2016 cycle to help reduce the burden?
No. We stopped doing that practice three years ago. We weaned them off of that just because we had no way of purchasing capital items. Basically, anything that we ever made over our budget was taken away and given back to the communities. And we had no way of, which is, so we stopped that and it took a three-year process of weaning that off of the communities, basically. So the last two years now, two years has been nothing and the year before that it was a small amount. So that's, it hasn't been used for that for a few years now. And I, I forgive, it could have been, it's from the auditors, I don't remember. There's something about the way the funds were given back and I don't know what that is, but...
What was used to reduce the bill, the budget item at the end?
Right. And when the boards met about this three years ago, the decision was made to stop doing that because the boards weren't aware of the true impact or the true cost of the service because it kept getting hidden by giving money back each year. And I say, I'm...
And the pool was drying up from my recollection. That you were holding, correct?
We've been in the lab for the last seven years, so there's always been some unassigned funds there. How they were utilized has changed the last few years. And last year, we ended up using some of that money to offset...
Chief, could you come on up here by Jerry's, for the sake of the camera?
So last year, we actually used it for the capital expense purchase that we needed for the safety gear. And that, so in using it for equipment that we would use, it offset the costs that would come from all the different municipalities. So instead of having to pay for all of that, some of the unassigned funds were used to take care of that. So there's, so the use of the unassigned funds has, in the last couple of years, actually been used as this capital expense offset. But it's never been designated to be that. It's just been a decision that's been made by the commission and the boards to use that money for those purchases, but it's never been officially set up as that. That's kind of, and when I proposed to have a capital expense fund, I actually made the proposal and finally did make it to the boards. All of the boards reviewed it and everybody decided they would do their own thing for capital expense purchases. So the policy that I had put forward was not adopted by any of the boards. And the practice of using unassigned funds was essentially the middle ground understanding that was established through that.
I think we established our own internally, correct?
We did for ambulances every four years, so we, starting in 17, we have, starting in 17, we have money there for one ambulance.
I'm confused why we don't prorate on the back end when we prorate on the front end. So we're prorating and we're three, almost three times the charge of Deerfield, but then we just throw that into the middle?
Yeah, that's good.
Should get the 80% on the trade-in.
Absolutely.
I mean, if you have your own, what was, did you explore options for getting your own loan? Because basically, you're coming to us for a loan. We already own, we already own the ambulance, we have a note on it that we have to pay off, so the trade-in is worthless.
EMS can't get that.
Yeah, they can't.
They can't get their own?
No.
Okay. So we are the bank. We are the bank.
Yes.
I have a question on the unassigned funds. Your unassigned fund policy is, you're supposed to have around two months of operating expenses.
And that was a...
Looking at your 16 budget, it's about $71,000 a month, so two months would be 142,000. If you're estimating that your reserve for this year, which you don't know yet because it's not, it was 158,000, how are you coming up with that large sum of money to use?
All we were looking for for the unassigned funds was simply to purchase the chassis.
But what I'm saying is, I don't see the money there.
Ninety-two thousand dollars out of the 100,000 that we know we've collected beyond, there's 158, there's 58,000 more beyond that. But we know we've collected 100,000 in excess run revenue. That money's already been collected.
But that doesn't necessarily equate to 100,000 of unassigned funds.
Correct. I understand that, which is why we have to wait until after the audit's done for it. But the chassis don't have to be paid for until July, but we need to order them early. So whether it's one or two, we still need to order one. And how it's paid for is, again, this is...
That's a big question.
Exactly. You're asking us to make a decision on something we don't know where the money's coming from, if it'll be there or if we're going to have to take out a loan, on top of the loan that we're paying for the one you're going to trade in for. And I know this, I understand depreciation, but a third of the price we paid for.
So basically, we have, it matures in March of 19 and about $18,000 a year, so...
And we did that based on, based on the previously agreed upon replacement schedule. Is why we chose to spread it out over the five years.
And you're saying that they, it has to be, like our government, there has to be, they have to have two months cash in the bank, so that's about $140,000. So you're saying on the 140, there's an additional 100 that you're going to draw from?
At this point, yes. Well, I'd say we have to wait until the audit's done to be sure what the actual total end does.
By the way, it was, that's what's working in my head, it sounded like there's only going to be a 40 left in the bank and we can't do that, so we want to make sure it's 100.
Within the operating budget this year, there wasn't any undesignated funds used in the operating budget?
No. There's never, there's never any money, unassigned funds used for the operating portion of it. But in the past, like three or four years ago, we used to use it to offset the bottom line that the municipalities would pay.
Is there a trend of the vehicles actually continuing to go down in purchase price brand-new?
Unfortunately, no. I can tell you, I just actually got a link, being on the ambulance committee, City of Merrill just got a new ambulance delivered, which is a four-by-four with the Bronc box on it, and their total cost out the door was $352,000.
So if you happen to get two brand-new, we were placing two brand-new again in eight years?
Yes.
Wouldn't it just make more sense to just stay on every four years by one?
That's the board's decision. I'd say the committee is happy either way. We wanted to broach the conversation because of the type of year. And I say, in regards to what you guys owe on the ambulance, we don't know that. It's just based on what we have in front of us for numbers, which is where those numbers come from.
I just feel like with technology, I don't think you'd want to go eight years with the same, I mean, going every four, at least, then you'd have a newer one every four years.
So you're still using the same technology for eight years. We're using the Horton, it's approaching its eighth year. You're stuck using the technology for eight years regardless. You're only replacing, you're replacing one ambulance every four years, but the ambulances are running eight years.
No, I know, but there's, you have one newer one every four years. I mean, even the 13 is, has already, has some things in it that aren't up to code.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying is, so now we don't have two that are, you know...
The same.
That are the same, that might not be within code. And we have to live with that for a lot longer time.
Like if another guideline would come down from wherever you got these guidelines for the safety, that you have to do something different? I mean, then would you have two things that don't meet the code? Is that where...
Well, these are, the safety guidelines are simply that. They're not enforceable. The NFPA guidelines, because they're not enforceable, it's something that they find is best practice. So there's no, there's no retro...
Chief, are you comfortable with the revenues, the projection of the revenue stream, was last year the first time that it had increased or...
No, it's, we've had overtures. We've been in the black for the last, like I said, like seven years.
Hey, Lee, are you talking about the budgeted revenues?
Yeah.
Yeah, this coming year, 2016, is the first time we've raised our revenues in, what, yeah, to what, four years or five years? It's been a while.
Is it partly because of the new system, right?
So, I mean, my question just is, is there a confidence that you raised your budget revenues? Is there a confidence that the, that changes have been made that will allow that to be a continuing trend? Kind of betting on the fact that...
I think what Lee is getting at is that this year, we know that part of the increase in revenues was the change with the biller and how all that came together. And also, wasn't there an increase in the cost? I mean, the each run?
This is the first full year that we had just a single run fee instead of the split run fee.
So between the increase in the fee and the change in the billing from, I can't think of the company, but...
LifeQuest.
LifeQuest. That has contributed to the increased unassigned funds this year. And I guess the question that I interpret Lee asking, is that going to continue?
Yeah. So based on just what we've collected this last year in 2015 and based on the Lifeline... the LifeQuest contract, if our call volume stays the same as last year, we can be predicted to pull in basically what we did in 2015. Our call volume trends upward. Over the last ten years, our call volume has trended upward every year except for one. So the amount collected will increase every year as well, but how much that is, yeah.
And then the trend of increased calls is also a trend that we see regularly as well.
More people.
And that's, yeah, based on growth of the communities and, you know, just general use of the system, so. So, I mean, it would have, it would be a very strange year, I guess, if we would not have as many calls. And, you know, those things, those anomalies would be known probably ahead of time as we come to the end of the year as well.
So we have just enough in there for, budgeted for one. We have about a hundred and twenty thousand in capital for next year, so if it ends up, you know, we're fifty-two percent of two hundred and fifteen or so thousand, so we should, we should be fine.
For one.
For one.
I want to go back to, you said that the last purchase was more expensive than this one?
Mm-hmm.
Correct? That's why I asked if there was a trend of downward, because if you purchase two, and then it's thirty grand cheaper four years from now, or whatever, you're only hurting yourself that way, too.
I think it was because the Lifeline was a different ambulance, with some different things on it versus...
Oh, it was a demo.
The demo's more expensive, it's what was available, because the Bron that it was replacing was, was nine years old and, and basically died, so we had to replace the ambulance.
The Horton is not, as I, as I've heard, the Horton has a lot of mechanical issues and probably really would not serve well as a backup even.
The mechanical issues the Horton suffered that were common was with the engine. The engine's been a problem from the day it was bought, it's just the engine that Ford put out for that year. But because of the problems, they've actually extended the warranty by quite a bit.
A hundred thousand miles.
An extra hundred thousand miles. So we, it's under warranty, the main, the mechanical issues it's had are under warranty.
But that doesn't, I mean, if it's down, it's not, it's not functional.
Yeah, we haven't, we have not had that ambulance down mechanically-wise. It's been, I mean, it's been in for regular maintenance, and the service net went on on it, but...
Yeah, well, for several months.
That brings up an interesting point, I was thinking about it, but now that you mentioned that, you said Ford had some bad engines at that period, buying two vehicles at the same time, you could be buying two vehicles with the same defects and have the same problem.
We thought about that.
It could happen anytime. I know, I mean, four-year cycles, defects happen all the time. There's a little bit more of a risk in your business as opposed to me, I can't get to work and...
Well, that was actually one of the thoughts behind the direction the chassis was taken anyway. The engine that's in the chassis that was chosen is an established Cummins diesel, it's been on the market for several years. With the Horton, when it was bought, Ford had just come out with a brand-new engine that year, and that's what you were stuck with if you got the van chassis, was that six-liter diesel, which was a piece of crap, which is why they don't make it anymore. But the diesel and the chassis that was picked by the committee is an established engine that, is not a new engine, so...
Yep, is the, is our loan secured by the ambulance?
I don't know, so...
Okay, so if, if it was sold, second, the loan gets called.
I'd have to check for sure, but I don't, so...
So the one thing that, you know, the committee, I originally was going to chair the committee, but Jerry was generous enough to take over the lead in it. And the direction that the committee took in considering two chassis was in a time when I wasn't there, but when they did present it to me, the part that was, is most, the strongest piece that brought me into the consideration is, is the uniformity of the equipment between the two. But what we have right now is a lift system on one and no lift system on the other one. And that particular item, even if we only get one, I would like to try to do what we can for the service to have both of the ambulances to have that particular piece of equipment. It's the, the standard, and it's there for the protection of the EMTs, essentially. The lift system itself, you take your cot, you roll it right onto there, and it lifts a person up with the cot. And I can tell you, to do that technique like we used to with manual cots, or even with the electric cot that we have now, it, it makes you think in your mind, like, I hope I don't drop this person, you know? You use your best technique, the way you were trained to do it and everything like that, but it's, it's a, something that goes through the back of your mind, you know? Okay, now I'm going to take all the weight onto myself here and then push them into the ambulance. This lift system that we have on there is, it's one of the greatest inventions that I think that they've made for EMS, because it protects the person who is taking care of that, whether it's the volunteers or the paid staff or whatever. It makes it so much easier for us and for the patient. It's a, brings a huge confidence level to the patient who is on that machine and having to go into the ambulance like that. So my big thing that, you know, made me truly consider this thing further and say, well, why don't you just see how far you can go with that, Jerry, is the fact that both of these ambulances would be equipped and set up exactly the same in both places. Everybody would know where things are at. We tried to work with the law enforcement, with the fire departments, and we tried to train the people on where we put equipment, so that if we're in a scene and we forgot to bring a longboard or something like that, we can say, hey, can you go grab it? And they already have an idea of where that is. If we have two different vehicles set up two different ways, they have to go through all of the compartments to try to find that and come back with a piece of equipment. So the uniformity is a, is a huge thing for just the efficiency of using the equipment. So I know that it's a bit of a pie in the sky idea, the part that it, that the cost of it is kind of like a buy one, get one free idea, because it's close to the cost of what we paid for the last. Those types of themes seem to, you know, give it a chance for consideration, and so that's...
Question that I have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but question that I have, is the box that you're talking about now, and I don't think we have any question as far as one or two new ones, a new one having the electric cot and all of that stuff. The, but the other equipment, can you design the new box so that it compares favorably with, with the one that was purchased in twelve thirteen? Do you have that, that flexibility?
Not, not with the way that they're built, they're, the way that the Lifeline's built is bench seats, and it's, it's just not possible with the configuration that it is. And just so you're aware, bottom line for one ambulance, you're going to be kind of spending probably two hundred and forty thousand for an ambulance, because you're not looking at a cost savings of eighty-five off, or without the unassigned funds. The cost of one of those ambulances is a hundred and ninety thousand plus the equipment needed, which is a lift system, the radios, all, lift system alone is twenty thousand dollars. So again, you're looking at a cost of about, I'm going to say probably about two hundred and thirty for one.
We have, I mean, we have that.
The Lifeline doesn't have a lift system in it?
The Lifeline does have a lift system in it, so it will be comparable once they're done. The Horton does not. So they each have a lift system.
If you have two main ambulances, then if you purchase one, we'll still have a lift system.
Correct.
So what does your fleet look like if you get both of them? You've got the interceptor and then those two new ones?
Yeah, so we'd have the two new ones, and we'd have the backup ambulance, and then the interceptor is used still for first responding.
And even the backup is up in the air. I say, we're, the ambulance committee is looking at the whole thing as a district, where we're at right now as opposed to where we're three years, or five years, or seven years ago. We don't even know where we'll be in eight years. We don't know. But I can tell you right now, we're the only service in N A County that does not have a backup ambulance, the only one.
Some of the things that the backup ambulance are good for, number one is just for the vehicle maintenance, and number two is when we have the festivals in each of the communities, we always have three ambulances, so usually we'll rent the county ambulance, Rescue Thirty, to have that here in our district while the other ambulances are being used on the fairgrounds. So there, we use three ambulances periodically throughout the year. And then last year, too, there was one time when both sirens went out, both vehicles. I mean, this is like the most, it was the strangest thing to us, really, to tell you the truth, but it happened within a day of each other. Yeah, so we had two ambulances that couldn't be utilized, we had to get Thirty in just to cover us until we got, we had that equipment back running, so...
But all the math to making two work doesn't necessarily work if we, we need half of the trade-in back to us, since we own fifty-two percent of it. So, I mean, not all the numbers work, and even with that, we're still going to owe thirty or so thousand after that to pay off the old ambulance, so...
Any other questions? Is this something we need to vote on tonight, then, or is there a way to...
I need more information, I need to see the whole thing.
It's my understanding, too, your, your audit is tomorrow?
Yeah.
Starts tomorrow?
Wedding committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you should have those numbers fairly soon.
Yeah, exactly. So, and they'll, they usually give us a rough, rough idea pretty right afterwards, you know, but the official end documents, however...
If I remember right, you're looking for an answer by the next EMS meeting, right?
Correct, by the February EMS meeting.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second to table till our next village board meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay, back up to item eight B. Update on Gaston Road right away permit.
The saga continues, and I thought we had, I thought we were going to be done with this after the utility commission meeting, because I think we got a very straightforward direction from utility, and Chris Hampton was there, the town chair, and I thought that we were good with the language, but there still has been some language questions, and so, as I understand, the town board's going to look at this again tonight, and we'll find out if we have a deal or we don't.
Okay. Any other questions on that for Lee? Okay. Eight C. Discuss and consider developer agreement with MS Swanson Properties LLC, Atlantis Valley Foods.
Mike Swanson's here, and Mike, maybe you want to step up there. I don't know if our earlier discussion has not convinced him that he should go into the ambulance building business, but this is something that, that we reviewed with the board, this is the developer agreement with MC Swanson Properties LLC. And the increment requirement on page four is that the developer, that the improved property shall know later than January first, two thousand and seventeen, have a development value of at least one million five hundred thousand. If for some reason that was not the case, then the developer would pay the village the difference between what the increment level is and one million five hundred thousand. So that was our, that was the deal that, that we, that the board approved, and that's what's in the developer agreement. And I'll leave it to Mike to explain his plans, because I understand that they're ready to close and proceed.
Yeah, I mean, as far as our timetable is concerned, contractor's ready to pull a permit to begin construction, at least by the end of February. The steel is set to arrive the middle of March, so they'd like to have everything prepped. So as a result, we'd like to close on the property almost as soon as possible. We're thinking about this week, but probably won't be possible until next week. Everything else seems to be in order, developer agreement. We really are attorney and Lee worked this out, and were no issues in the language, and no substantive changes in that. Our understanding is clear as to the improved value and so forth. As I had mentioned at a previous meeting, I don't think that's going to be a problem whatsoever, the budget on the building alone, so... So we're hoping for an approval this evening on the developer agreement.
Motion to approve the developer agreement with MS Swanson Properties.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the developer agreement with MS Swanson Properties. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jay, the, or, chairman has it. The pro town. In order to actually complete the transaction, this is a little bit like the first, when I got out of law school, and I realized I really didn't know how to file a case or really do much of anything, and so in this situation, what, what happens is that we have an approved developer agreement, and then we will be working out the details of the closing. And what we have traditionally done is that the board approves a durable power of attorney real estate for Matt to, for Matt, it's either Matt or myself, and I set it up for Matt, and then there's a resolution that just says that we adopt the power of attorney real estate, and that's simply a title company request. In the past, what's happened is that, you know, we've done a power of attorney, and then we have to make sure that the minutes get done in time, and so it's just easier to do a resolution. So this is a one-time deal where staff is directed to take all of the necessary steps to complete the closing, and as soon as the closing is completed, then we'll make a full report to the board in terms of what happened.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty sixteen oh one, authorizing staff to take all required action regarding sale of property to and closing transaction with MC Swanson Properties LLC, Atlantis Valley Foods. Any other discussion? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, new business. Discuss and consider approval of eight seven zero zero dash two eight zero, two eight zero project acceptance certification, DRACs for the reservoir number two reconstruction project.
This is just paperwork for the safe drinking water loan projects as well. This is for reservoir two, which is the one behind here up on the hill. The work that both DRACs and R G Houston did. The project is done, the complaint and all retainages have been paid, so to close it out, they require signed certificates approved by the board.
So it's just academic?
Yep.
Motion to approve eight seven hundred two eighty for DRACs.
All right, and John seconded, so we have a motion and a second to approve the project acceptance certificate for DRACs. Any other discussion?
To set engineers that, you know, they finish all their inspections and have closed the project.
Good. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There we go. And same thing for nine B. Discuss and consider approval of eight seven zero zero dash two eight project acceptance certification for R G Houston for the reservoir two reconstruction project.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion and a second to approve this one. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Nine C. Discuss and consider approval of amended alcohol beverage license for eighteen fifty-five saloon and grill.
Eighteen fifty-five saloon and grill took their alcohol license out for this license year under the LLC of the men, LLC. That has been restructured, and I'm not sure if that's even been closed, but they've done a lot of staff changes. So they've also changed their agent for eighteen fifty-five, so in order to do all that and change the seller, they had to amend their seller's permit to their license as well. So that's, and that requires board approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Nine D. Discuss and consider operator license for, do we want to do these individually?
Do we do them individually, or together?
Were there any issues with any of this, Chief?
Nope, no. We just do them together.
Okay, we can take them all together if somebody wants to make a motion. I'll make the motion to approve them, that's fine.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve operator licenses for Amanda Larson, Anna Janina Peterson, Connie Stahl, Shay Long Yang, Lindsay Ives. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
One abstention, motion passes. Okay, reports from village board, village boards, committees, and commissions. We just did Deer Grove, and so item B is law enforcement committee. We met last week.
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, yeah. And I'll let Chief fill us in, I mean, we just did the detective report, K-9 report, and chief's report, and we had some other money that we moved in to pay for the lieutenant, is that correct, Chief?
And we got to see the new phone.
Pardon?
We got to see the new phone.
Yes, the emergency.
And the backup phone.
Yes.
There's a backup phone?
Don't pick it up.
There's a bad phone.
It works fine. The emergency phone is now in the vestibule, and we are locking the inner door, but not the outer door at night, so if there's an emergency, someone can get in the vestibule and lock it behind them and use the emergency phone. So we have that set up for when there's nobody in the office or an officer at the station. We have a need for part-time officers, we don't have them budgeted, and we have zero part-time officers right now. So we have money budgeted for the lieutenant in 2016, but we won't be able to fill that position probably for the first two and a half, three months of the year, because we're in the hiring process and the background process. So my request was to use the unused funds to pay for part-time officers in 2016, and we are doing a hiring process for part-time officers right now, and we did the lieutenant interviews at the police commission. We had four candidates, myself and the village administrator that interviewed the four finalists, and we picked a gentleman from, I don't know if I should mention on, mention his name right now, but he is going through the background process, and I am confident that he will pass it. And he is an experienced supervisor with a proper education and, and command staff school, so I'm confident that he will take over and do a good job as a lieutenant.
And then, I think, we saw this in a paper too, but you know the Craigslist Safe Zone at the police department for transactions?
Right, we.
Which is great considering recent headlines.
Yes, if someone wants to use our parking lot or lobby during business hours, or the vestibule at night when there's nobody there, they can always call us when nobody's there, but we have cameras outside 24/7. A police officer can come in off the road and be present if someone is feeling a little bit suspect about the person they're meeting, and I would suggest using that instead of having someone come to your house who's a perfect stranger, who may end up doing something you're not too happy with, so. I'm hoping people will take advantage of this, and the last police department I was at, we had people in there on a fairly regular basis using it, and they felt a lot more comfortable doing so.
Got any questions?
Question?
I guess a question for Matt. When we, I think I know the answer, but I just wanna remind myself. When we built the budget for 2016, we didn't prorate the lieutenant position, knowing that the person wouldn't start January one?
No, we didn't. We normally do for some, for some reason that one wasn't, but it makes sense to prorate, although you always have to remember then the next year, you know, you're gonna have to either cut or increase.
It ramps up, right.
So, so, you know, you can do it either, either way, for that position, for some reason, we just didn't.
Okay, just wanna make sure that we're not, there's a gap and we didn't.
Right.
Realize we prorated, okay. I was pretty sure we didn't prorate it, but I wanted to.
Yeah, there's a gap there, it was.
So we didn't.
It was budgeted at the, the high end of the range.
Okay. Very, thank you.
So we're good. All right. Met Big Landfill Committee.
All right, met last Monday. Alex was not present, so I'm doing the report today. We had a quorum, paid bills, and the monitor results were good, so that was it.
All right, ten B.
Sent me the minutes to type up for him. So there will be some minutes.
Sweet. Ten B, Parks Recreation and Forest.
Okay, we met on Thursday, January 21st. Just an update on Governor Taylor, we had originally thirteen trees that needed to be taken down. One of them fell down, so we only have to pay for twelve now, the company is redoing that.
Wait till after the next storm and then see what happens.
You never can tell, you never can tell. We talked about the dog park and things that committee members would like to see. Sean had gone out to a half a dozen different dog parks to see what other communities have done and what they look like, so we talked about what we would like to see in ours. We talked about the Bakken shelter update. We're continuing to meet with rugby, the soccer clubs, and continuing to reach out to the school district to see, you know, where those funds are gonna come, come from. They also had a fundraising, fundraising committee, and they're going to have another one here soon to see if we can go the route of the kids' park and how that was taken care of, so we'll see how that turns out. Reese and Sean met with Christie Massey and Jeff Schreiner at the high school. We're not copying, but, but emulating what the district does with, with the rental of their facilities, just so the four of them got on the same page, that will be, clean up a lot of issues for Parks and Rec. We also got the donation catalog that's going to be going out in the Herald. Sean built a whole system where if you are interested in sponsoring a team, if you're interested in sponsoring equipment, if you are interested in sponsoring the Music in the Grove, all those opportunities are laid out quite simply, user-friendly for businesses or, or private residents who want to support the Parks Department. Music in the Grove dates have been set, FYI. May 19th will be at Dublin Park, June 16th will be at Fireman's to, to go along with, with the Fireman's Festival. July 21st will be at Community, and then August 18th and September 16th will be back at Dublin Park, so hopefully get a good turnout for those, and it won't rain.
Sounds good, thank you. Reports from village officers, Kyle?
Yeah, let's see, I went to Wana Key and checked out their multi-use facility, Senior Center. That was quite the tour, it was a beautiful building, so. And then also, the Chamber is running the Meet Your Village Trustees thing like last year, on February 25th at 9:00 AM at the Village Hall.
Okay, thank you. I have a report, Alex.
Jennifer.
The high school music department is currently in rehearsals for the musical, which will be run April 8th through the 10th. It's legally blown this year. The show choir is also currently prepping for its Silver Stage, which is our, our show choir competition that we host, twenty-six schools. This year, I know, it's impossible. I don't believe it's gonna happen, no, it will. We have great people at the helm. So it's $10 for a day pass to come and see twenty-six show choirs, so that's a pretty good bang for your buck. And, you know, then the, all the teams are in full swing, the boys are having a heck of a year, the girls are having a great year, the wrestlers are having a great year, the gymnasts are having a great, I mean, you just can't top MG Sports, so.
Thank you. Harvey?
Norbert Park.
John?
Just wanted to, I don't have really official reporting of that, I just wanna highlight, in the Sunday State Journal, the Skill Building was outlined on the back page, the business section, and it was a nice little article, plug for Cottage Grove, plug certainly for Skill, and it does show that the business park is alive and well, and it was nice to see.
Yeah.
So I'll pass this around to those, did you get a chance to?
Attorney Lee Nishay.
No report.
Administrator Matt Giese.
Just for everyone's information, in 2013, Deer Grove EMS used $85,000 of undesignated funds to offset the budget. In 2014, they used $40,000 to offset the budget.
Can you say that again?
In two thou, in 2013, $85,000 was used for operating expenses of reserves, and $40,000 in 14, so it hasn't been some.
Nothing in 15.
Nothing in 15, nothing in 16.
Okay. Director of Planning and Development, Aaron Hoof.
Norbert Park.
All right. Number 12, Communications and Miscellaneous Business. Consider approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve the vouchers is presented.
Second, I have a question, or who had it?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, you have a question?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Go ahead, Alex.
Okay, I noticed the Colonial Club is in here, and we had asked them for a letter stating that they will be providing services.
Okay.
As, in lieu of the, you know, we had the discussion, it's not a donation, it's providing services.
Like a scope of services?
Yeah, and do we?
That's probably on, that's on me more than anything, because I think they said that I was gonna do a draft of that, and I'll remind myself.
So do we get the letter before we pay them, or do we pay them before we?
This is for December, right?
This is, this is 2016, 2016 fees for service.
I don't know, how does everybody feel about, if we're, if Lee and Matt have the letter, I guess?
Well, it was condemned, I mean, it was conditioned, he heard what everyone wanted, so we'll, we'll resolve. We'll take care, yeah, we'll take care of that before the next meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, we have a motion then and a second to approve the vouchers. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, any correspondence there? Future agenda items, anybody? I think we'll be revisiting.
We should have the Horizon deal, the, discusses a regular item.
Okay.
For the developer agreement.
Great.
Next time, hopefully.
Okay, anybody wanna see the EMS ambulance thing back on next meeting? Because the results of the audit would be done?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Make a decision.
If they need a decision from us before March, yeah.
We need, we need to take something back.
Yeah.
To the meeting in February, which is after our next meeting.
All right. Anything else? Okay, awesome. Number 13, closed session. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, parent one, parent C. Put my glasses on, geez. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, conducting other specified business whenever competitive and or bargaining reasons require a closed session, negotiate terms for potential development in TID 6 by Horizon Development Group, Inc., and negotiate terms of proposed website vendor contract, and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, administrator evaluation. Roll call, vote.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion and a second, roll call, vote, pal.
Aye.
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 Jennifer?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
John?